Good evening and welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for July 24th. If I could have everybody stand, Commissioner Dodds, would you lead us in the pledge?
Put your hand over your heart and please pledge to the Lord, to the United States of America, and to the God of all creation, one nation, and on God, the invisible, the liberty, and the rest of all.
Thank you. Let's do roll call, city planner, please.
Certainly, Chairman Rosales.
President.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony. Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
And Commissioner Malik.
Present.
Let the record show, five of the six planning commissioners are present and we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Communications for matters not on tonight's agenda, do we have any slips to speak?
We do not have any slips this evening.
That doesn't mean that you can't come forward if you'd like to address the commission on items, this is again items not on tonight's agenda, anybody like to come forward, you have three minutes. Jimmy, I see you standing, welcome.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Jimmy Not, 127 Sherri Lane. One thing I would like to have the commission start thinking about is maybe doing like the city of San Diego and other communities have, and that is establishing town councils. We have districts now, and normally what follows in districts, establishment of the districts, is town councils. And what that does is that it provides you as a commission and also the council representatives more input from the public and resources that would be available to you to take and get information from the public. And I would encourage you to take and work with our city council and also with the different people within the communities and to see if we can start looking, maybe getting a charter amendment to take and say that's establish a town council for each district and giving them limited power to have public hearings on those issues that may come before you so that way that you, when you have a controversial issue, that community has already heard a lot of the problems and maybe they could resolve those issues before it comes into your lap. And it would save you time, you trouble, and then progressively the council time and trouble as well. So it's just an idea to put on the trash heap of ideas, so I would like to just share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Any other, anybody else like to come forward and speak to the non-agendized, any non-agendized item? Okay, don't see anybody coming forward, so go to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from our last meeting on June 26th. Entertain a motion or any edits to the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Malik. Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Vice Chair Morrissey seconds that motion. I will abstain because I was not at the meeting, but otherwise let's go ahead and vote.
Let's record show the motion passes 4-0 with Chairman Rosales abstaining.
Thank you. Under consent calendar items, we do not have anything listed for this evening. We also do not have anything listed under transportation items, so we'll go to our public hearings. We have one item this evening. The item is consideration of a development plan and a conditional use permit to allow construction of a warehousing distribution facility at 1851 Ordway. Let's start with disclosures. I'm familiar with the area, did a drive-by real quickly, got a staff report, and then I believe we all received a couple of emails as well to go along with this item. Commissioner Dodds, disclosures.
I'm familiar with the area, I did drive-by and look at the open lot and read the staff report, received emails and also the last-minute letters that we received at the desk.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma.
I would say ditto to all that Commissioner Dodds said.
Thank you. Vice Chair Morrissey.
Well, I would say ditto, but I have not read the communication we just got yet.
Thank you. And Commissioner Malik.
Same.
Same. Good evening, Dane, floor is yours.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Dane Thompson with Planning Division presenting tonight's item, the Ordway Industrial Project. The project site is located on the east side of Ordway in the Peacock neighborhood. Here's a visual of the site, which is the last undeveloped lot in the Oceanside Gateway Industrial Park. This project is a request for two entitlements, a development plan and a conditional use permit. The development plan is a request for a 70,000-square-foot shell industrial warehousing and distribution facility with an associated parking lot landscaping and bioretention basin. The conditional use permit is a request to have an industrial building for distribution with a floor area greater than 50,000 square feet, as well as having more than six truck Here's the site plan of the project. The projection you can see on the southwest corner of the site will be used as office space with a mezzanine above it. The applicant has made it so that they could mirror that on the southeastern side of the building should a future tenant desire that. A tenant has not been disclosed at this time for this project. The loading docks, as you can see, have been inset into the building as a design feature to help with the aesthetics of the building and to help out, help screen some of the operations on-site. Project is proposing a concrete tilt-up building, as you can see in the renderings shown, score lines and dark gray accents to create some visual articulation. The project is proposing a variety of landscaping throughout the project site, including the trees shown here, screening shubs, ground covers, and ornamental plants. The project is proposing a facility with 16 loading bays, 78 regular parking spaces, and four truck parking spaces. A distribution facility of this scale is required to provide 46 regular parking spaces. The traffic study prepared for this project estimates 580 daily trips added, of which 160 of those are estimated to be truck trips. Of those 160 truck trips, 18 are estimated during the morning rush hour, with 20 estimated during the evening rush hour. The traffic study included that the added trips would not exceed the thresholds of significance determined by the city, and all truck traffic would be expected to utilize Oceanside Boulevard in Ordway. No truck trips would be expected to travel via Peacock Boulevard or the residential areas, shown on this diagram here. The project has been reviewed and found to be in conformance with all relevant city codes and policies. The project is consistent with the policies of the light industrial land use designation and is compatible with surrounding land uses. The project complies with the zoning ordinance as the components of the development plan meet all applicable development standards, and the CUP request would be compatible with the surrounding area. The project is eligible for a Class 32 infill exemption for the SEQA guidelines as the site is located in an existing largely-developed industrial park, and the project would not be assumed to have significant environmental impacts above what was already determined by the mitigated negative declaration approved with the construction of this industrial. The applicants complied with the city's enhanced notification policy and held a virtual open house on February 23rd at 6:00 PM, to which three members of the public attended. To date, staff has received seven letters from the public. Common concerns include traffic, noise, and aesthetic impacts. With that, staff recommends the planning commission by motion confirm issuance of a Class 32 categorical exemption for the SEQA guidelines, Article 19, Section 15, 332, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2023-P18. The applicant has requested a few minor non-substantive, non-substantive, sorry, changes to be included with that resolution, so I'll read those to the record. Those will be concerning conditions 1, 2, and 15. Condition 1 shall read, "This development plan and conditional use permit shall expire on July 24th, 2026 unless this time period is extended by the provisions of Article 1 of the zoning ordinance or as implemented by Articles 41 and 43 of the zoning ordinance." Condition number 2 shall read, "This development plan and conditional use permit, as conditioned, proves only the construction and operation of a 69,380-square-foot shell warehousing and distribution building with 16 heavy truck terminals, as shown on the plans and exhibits presented to the Planning Commission for review and approval. No deviation from these approved plans and exhibits shall occur without Planning Division approval. Substantial deviations shall require a revision to the project or a new project." Condition number 15 shall read, "The project shall reduce vehicular emissions by implementing TDM strategies that could include, but are not limited to," and then go on to list the same examples as shown below. That concludes my presentation. The applicant has a presentation as well, and we both will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane, don't leave just yet. I had a question about the sort of types of comments that we received in the community outreach, I think you said three folks showed up at the community outreach, but then we, there were seven letters or comment letters or emails. I'm interested mostly in the traffic, any, because I think you indicated there were comments about traffic and so forth. Can you sort of characterize what those comments were? Because one of the emails, I think, that we all received was from somebody in the area supposing that traffic would impact their residential area, so was that kind of what you heard in those other letters that you received or reviewed?
Yes, Chair. Mostly those concerns centered around truck trips, traveling through mostly like North Avenue, other sites that don't see as many truck trips as arterial like Oceanside Boulevard. And then other concerns included just general traffic impacts on streets like Oceanside Boulevard that can be congested certain times of the day.
Okay. Commissioner Dodds, go ahead.
I just, can we go back to the slide where you talk about truck trips? At the top of this slide, the 580 daily trips, is that, is that for all the site? Or we're talking about additional to, because it doesn't really explain exactly what that number represents.
Commissioner Dodds, that number is the estimated added daily trips for this project specifically.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I don't see any more questions, Dane, so applicant, I understand, is here, wants to do a short presentation, so if you would come forward.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, thanks for having us. My name's Matt Traino. I'm with IDS Real Estate Group, we're the developer and applicant, and Shane is also with IDS. We've got a short presentation that we'll run through, and then we're available for any questions as well, as our land use counsel here who's available for any technical questions as well. One thing I do want to clarify is, I think one of the comments on traffic was, was potential trips on north, and you can't ox, you cannot access the project site, excuse me, off-north, it's only off-board, and I think Dane's slide showed that well. Real quick, thank you to staff, we've been working on this with staff for a year, and it's been a pleasure, so thank you guys. So project team, quickly here, Ware Malcolm is our architect, Pasco Loretz Sudern Associates, a local civil engineer is our civil engineer, Howard Associates, local landscape architect, Intesa was our community outreach consultant, Hammond Companies is going to be the general contractor, we are the developer. Quick description, Dane hit some of this, but this is a Class A, something not in the staff report, we are, we have already submitted and are pursuing a LEED Silver designation, I think this is probably, haven't been able to confirm, but I think it is the first LEED industrial project in the city of Oceanside, which I think is a really unique feature. We're 69,380 square feet, that includes 2,645 square feet of office, 1,500 on the ground floor, and about 1,100 on the mezzanine above that ground floor. We do have 16 loading docks on the southern end of the building. We've really worked with Ware Malcolm on the aesthetics, this is an elegant, modern exterior, we've got a lot of glass, I think you'll see in the renderings that we're showing, significantly more glass than most industrial buildings have. We're also using board-formed concrete for some relief in the elevations, and then we have these steel shade screens that help with shading on some of the large glazing. We've got increased efficient daylighting via over 1,000 square feet of glazing and 3% skylight coverage on the roof. We've got native drought-tolerant low-water-use landscaping throughout that Howard has designed. Our tree canopy is approximately 25%, which is roughly 2X of city's requirements. We've got a landscaped and illuminated outdoor amenity area for the future tenant and their employees, and our parking is well in excess of Oceanside requirements. Just broadly in terms of land use, we, there are no variances requested for this project, and we fit very neatly within the land use as prescribed by the general plan and the zoning for this parcel. So light industrial is the proposed use, this is the last undeveloped parcel within the existing business park. Ordway is a private street built exclusively for the adjoining industrial properties. There's surrounding industrial land to the north and the west. The project is owned by the same group that owns the business park directly north, which is home to Geldwyn or La Cantina Doors, as well as a couple of other tenants. The Sprinter rail line, am I running out of time? Oh, okay.
Somebody's cricket.
The Sprinter rail line runs immediately south of the project, which you'll see in the renderings. Again, the zoning's consistent. Some economic impacts, this is an efficient use of land for employment and revenue generation. We do, we don't have a tenant right now, but we hope to be able to expand one of the existing businesses. There are, La Cantina has some interest in growing in the community, and this could potentially fit their needs, as well as a group by the name of Brewers Supply Group, who is a big supplier of a lot of the local breweries. This expands the city's economic base, it eases the city's deficit of industrial land relative to estimated industrial demand, which is continuing with nearshoring, and we're seeing it throughout the county. It's also a potential home for expansion of the existing businesses that I just mentioned. Quick table on zoning compliance, so again, I think we really fit, the project fits neatly within the existing land use box. We are, you know, front yard side, or front yard setback 10 feet, we're 12. There is no prescribed setback on the side and the rear, but you can see ours, they're significantly larger than the front. Maximum height's 80 feet here, we're 42. Lot coverage max is 75/34. Max floor area ratio, or FAR, is 1, we're .34. Minimum employee amenity area is 1,000, we're 1182, so on and so forth. I won't go through the whole thing, but really, we are, we are well within all environments and exceed many significantly. I'm going to turn it over to Shane to talk about some of the, really, the building specifics as he's led our design team.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. As Matt said, I just wanted to further expand on some of the design elements that he touched upon, and really, one of the largest ones is the LEED certification. As Matt mentioned, we have already submitted Silver. Depending on the review, there is a, an outside chance that we'll be pushed to the LEED Gold category, but we are at a minimum planning on Silver. Solar, installed solar to meet 50% plus of the anticipated demand of the building is one of the larger items. We've also begun the process of a full carbon lifecycle analysis for both building, and then also diving deeper into exactly what's going into the concrete mix to reduce carbon. This is part of the LEED certification, but also kind of an above and beyond project that the ownership group would like to entertain, and is entertaining. Water reduction and heat island production in lieu of cold pool roof are some of the other larger design elements that will play a factor in our certification of LEED. I won't speak too much to the community outreach because it was in the staff report and Dane hit on it, but we did hold virtual open house, attended by three attendees. We did field and answer any questions that came up, traffic, aesthetics, future operations, any impacts, and to our knowledge, no further concerns from the community were voiced to us after the open house. We did send all of the committed follow-up to the attendees that requested and received no further concerns at that point in time. A few iterations of this site plan have been shown thus far this evening. This is a little more basic in terms of removing dimensions and truck traffic, but we did want to hit on, obviously highlighting the solar I mentioned. We did locate four charging stations that we will be installing, and then we will have a number of other solar-ready parking stalls. The outdoor amenity area that's landscaped and lighted that Matt mentioned is on the east side of the site, and then it will be a secure site with a 6-foot wrought iron fence and a rolling gate just beyond the entry from Ordway, bottom left of the site there. The building plan itself, not a ton to highlight, but I did want to mention, to follow Matt's comments, that we are designing a modern building and designing it to meet the modern tenant demand, whether that is the local spaces that we would hope to have interest in expanding. Dane touched on the office in the southwest corner, start to see a little bit of a call-out in this plan, and I will show you some highlights of it slides here. These images have been interspersed throughout some of the presentations this evening, but there are views from Ordway to the west, from the south, and from the southeast, and I think one of the items that maybe hasn't been hit on a ton is the building, and those of you Commissioners that drove past, you'll have noticed it's a pretty severe slope on the site, and so even with a 42-foot max building height, we are building the building into a grade, and so that top building will not actually necessarily be the full 42 feet, and there is a pretty severe grade above it, so it will not be very high, especially towards north. And then just one last image showing from North Avenue from the south, you can see just a bit of the Sprinter line rendered on the far right of the site, and just given a picture of the setback from North Avenue. And I won't, I won't dive too deep because we are still in the conceptual stage of the interior finish, but we wanted to give general picture of natural light from the entry where the doors are. You'll have a two-story reception area right at the entry and completely glass above that to bring in natural light. We have elements of bow-green wall, we have elements of neutral tones, and really focused on making this an optimal tenant user experience. And with that in mind, I will turn it back to Matt to close out and answer any questions. Thank you.
Shane. I think one last thing I wanted to address is that we were provided a letter at 1 o'clock today from a group that has some concerns, a group, his name is Safer, we're sure some of you are familiar with what that group is. We scrambled to provide a response, we, I think we gave one at 5 o'clock, we weren't given much time, but we did provide a response. I have our land use counsel here, Jeff Ferrano, who can answer any technical questions with respect to that letter or our response. And with that, we'll welcome any question.
Thank you, gentlemen, any questions? Commissioner Malik, go ahead.
You said it was going to be built into the hillside, what's the, what's the elevation, building elevation at that point? I know it's 32, essentially 32 feet tall, but how much of that's in the ground?
We're actually, we're retaining on the north end, so Prescott Industrial Park sits above the site, and we are, we also have some transmission lines that SDGNE owns there, so we are pushing into the hillside, and I think our max amount of essentially earth that we retain is 10 feet on the north side, so it's built 10 feet into the north side, and the tilt wall is actually acting as the building wall and the retaining wall.
Okay. And the interior clear height, just out of curiosity?
Max interior clear height is 32 feet.
Okay, so thanks.
Or, excuse me, that's minimum interior clear height.
Okay.
So minimum 32.
Thank you. One more question, Commissioner Dodds?
Mine is more just curiosity, you said there current, there isn't a current occupant, correct?
We do not have a current occupant, we just started publishing a brochure, a marketing brochure or leasing brochure. We've had one group with interest, who's one of our existing tenants in the business park to the north, and that's it so far.
Okay, because my follow-up question was going to be, why, why build now if there wasn't a, a definitive tenant?
So, great question, we'd love to have a tenant before we build, that would be ideal, but this is an ownership group that has owned the, the three buildings immediately adjacent to the north for five years, they're a large institutional investor, they've got a long-term commitment to the business park to the north, and they've got a long-term commitment to own this building once it's built, so they're not as concerned about a speculative leasing as somebody who's looking to maybe build and then sell, this is somebody who's looking to build and hold.
And I just want to add, I loved the design, it was excellent.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, that's it for now, we may call you up for something else later. This is a public hearing, so we invite participation by the audience, do we have any slips? We'll go to slips first.
Chairman Rosales, yes, we have two slips this evening, let's see, sorry. Here we go, okay. Looks like we're going to have, maybe, there we go. You'll have three minutes to speak, state your names, be clearly into the microphone, and Jimmy, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you. Chair, Commissioners, developers, staff, Jimmy Not, 127 Sherri Lane. You may ask, why is this guy from down in South Oceanside talking on this subject clear up in Peacock Hills area? Very simply, if you ever read the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' reports over the years, you would understand this one thing that is shared in common with us, it's called the Loma Alta. It's called the Loma Alta Creek. They, in their report, pointed out years and decades, decades, decades ago, that anything that would take and affect the percolation of rain or any type of water into the ground will affect us clear down near the coast. We do not receive the 1,500 feet notice on any building on the creek up beyond that point. We should receive every notice on that creek clear up to Melrose, but we don't. There is a lot of things that need to be looked at. Number one, the trees that may be planted. Are they already substantially grown, or are they twigs planted in the ground? That way, we know that the water will be percolated up and evaporated. This is not explained. Another thing is that the runoff, it's not really explained to the public how before and after it's going to be handled. And if there is excess, how will that take and be accommodated and held off from running into the creek that could potentially affect my park, my people, and even myself? Another thing is the hours of operation. That has not been clarified essentially. Some places in some communities limit hours of operation. Now, what the hours of operation are in some communities, they taken on the roadways limit the truck hours moving stuff back and forth on the main thoroughfare. Oceanside has decided not to do that. We might want to start considering that, considering the LOS that we have, because it's ever increasing with our population. And then there's the environmental offsets. And then you have under that environmental justice. This is cited between communities that are into both sides of the project. A senior community, Peacock Hills, how are they taking and going to take and affect and help the seniors in that community? There's a school nearby. How will they help the school nearby? There should be some form of active community participation. Then there's social impact. What future options this land, which is one resource, removal will have for the future options for the community, for the families, for the seniors, for everyone that's involved? Then we have the assessments that are involved. What do you have for parks that would be for the local community so they don't have to take and run down to El Corazon, which is really far away if you ever have to walk to it? Then you have Ord itself. It circles out to Oceanside. You potentially have some issues with that and the heavy trucks that they were saying, the wear and tear on the roads. What type of impact or the economic offset to the regular public? That is not being quantified. That has to take in consideration, or is it going to be saddled with the rest of the people of the city and not with this new development? These are some considerations that need to go into this, into this, that were not taken in, even though they were brought out. These should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Our next speaker, Wendy Bravo.
We have seen in other municipalities where, let's say, ill-conceived projects haven't taken into account what the impact is going to be on future generations of the municipality, namely our children, and then, of course, you know, what happens with our seniors. I admit that I'm new to this project. I just recently looked over the resolution. My concerns are that the general plan is inadequate to, to address a lot of the concerns that Jimmy just brought up. We know that we've had torrential rains, for example, recently and a terrible sinkhole debacle, which stopped down in 78 East and West for quite some time. Mention is made here about vernal pools and fragile habitat species, that sort of things we have throughout town, which appeared shortly after that in a development which was just done on Oceanside Boulevard. It was just voted in, a high-density development over a kind of a vernal pool area. I realize that I'm segueing, but I think that 16 truck terminals and their loading bays is going to create a lot of noise pollution. I don't see that being addressed here adequately. Even the notion of noise pollution, it's not something that's studied or figures into these, into these reports, nor light pollution at night. So what is going to happen with the downstream consumer? We thinking about the downstream consumer when we put these industrial developments slam-bang up against residential developments and then can expect these kinds of weather changes with torrential rains and that sort of thing? I looked at the drainage on the project, and I agree with Jimmy that it's not adequate to show what, how plantings are going to mitigate the hours of operation. And it seems as though the city's affording itself a carte blanche for noise pollution in some other projects that have been proposed here and are currently under review, namely the Eddie Jones Development Project up on, off of 76, where you have these shell clients and a beautiful idea here that looks very salable, but then the flip side of that is to have the developer just go, gee, I don't know, and let's just wait and find out. We can't afford that. We have, you know, fragile resources. Is that my light here? I'll make it be my light. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers this evening, Chair.
Great, thank you. If you did not submit a slip and would like to speak to this item, you're welcome to come Grab either mic, bring it down to you, and you, like the other speakers, will have three minutes. If you could give us your name.
Thank you so much. My name is Dee Keck. I didn't have a question when we started, but when I saw the slides, I did have a question. And that pertains to the traffic leaving this facility. It stated, the gentleman stated that it would be east and west, to my knowledge. I saw arrows leaving the facility, which tells me to the west on Oceanside Boulevard is a straight shot out to the freeway. To the right, you're going up to Bobier and to Santa Fe, and then I'm supposing to 76. I'm worried about the level of service, the LOS, sorry, and the residential areas that are to the east, especially when it comes to the Melrose and Bobier intersection and the Santa Fe out to the 76. So I may be misinformed because I only quickly looked at your slide, but the arrows went both ways, and you stated Oceanside Boulevard. That would be only to the left because Oceanside Boulevard stops, becomes Bobier, and then goes on to the streets, the roads, the avenues that I stated, takes you out to 76. My concern with that, well, it's multifaceted, but I'm very concerned, again, about what was just mentioned with the warehouse distribution facility that is being proposed at Benet on the 76. We are already concerned about the traffic from those trucks going east and west, and if they are now going to be compromised by trucks from this facility as well, that amplifies our concerns. So if I am misled with only a glance at your slide, I do apologize, but I do remember seeing arrows going both ways and a statement that it would be Oceanside Boulevard, which implies it's only going west. So if I could have clarification, or if the council could please have clarification, I would appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Any other speakers like to come forward? Don't see anybody coming forward, so we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I can lead if not. Commissioner Bauma, go ahead.
On what Dee had spoken to and asked the question of, I know I looked at one of the traffic studies. It looks like it's 75% of the truck traffic would go west and 25% was going to go east. And I guess it goes to, I mean, if you just want to expand on that, like where actually, I mean, Oceanside Boulevard obviously goes down to the five, but where the 25% goes east? Because I think that was the question.
Commissioner Bauma, that's a great question. I don't really have an answer for that, unfortunately. The traffic study was vetted by our traffic engineering department, but in the traffic study, there are thresholds of which intersections and which segments are analyzed. I believe that's a threshold of 50 ADT per intersection, an increase of that at least. And so only Ordway and Oceanside Boulevard and Ordway and Peacock Boulevard, also the project driveway, but mainly those two intersections were included because trips were expected to disperse after those intersections.
So if I could expand on, I see city planners jumping in. So there's, just for clarification, there is the threshold. There is a limitation to how far out that evaluation and analysis goes. I think you just explained it. Peacock, Oceanside Boulevard, Ordway, it doesn't go 10 miles out east or west.
Yes, Chair, you got it. So there's also a radius. I believe it's one mile typically, so you're not looking at something in Vista and so on. But yeah, as far as I know, I believe those are the thresholds to kick in analysis, 50 daily trips.
Great. City planner, did you have some to add?
Chair, I'll just add to the response that, you know, as Dave mentioned, that the local transportation study prepared for the project, it's actually probably a local transportation assessment, I'm guessing, was prepared for the project based on the number of ADT a day. If you take that 580 ADT and you compare it as a percentage of the overall ADT along these major intersections, it's a very small fraction, as evidenced by the fact that we're proposing an infill exemption. There is no impacts with respect to VMT. The Transportation Engineering Department or Division of Public Works did not condition the project to make any improvement. So all this tells me is that the project's all within the acceptable level of service outlined in our circulation element. If not, we wouldn't be here today with the resolution in front of you.
Right. That makes sense. Commissioner Dodds, and then Commissioner Malick after.
Yes. Mr. Knott brought up a point that raised a question for me in that, has there been an impact assessment on roadwear when we're talking about an additional 160 heavy truck daily, daily trips?
So Commissioner Dodds, to answer your question, every project in the city pays what they call a thoroughfare impact fee. That's to account for the impact that that facility is going to have on our local roadways. Again, being a small percentage of the overall average daily trips for any given road in the city, they pay their fair share. So in this case, the project's going to pay their fair share in the, in the way of a thoroughfare impact fee. And just to expand on that a little bit, the city collects those funds and then does capital improvement projects to improve certain segments of roads based on need.
Thank you. Commissioner Malick.
So does that go into the general fund, or does that go into something specific for roads, Sergio?
So development, to answer your question, Commissioner Malick, the development impact fees are, go into specified accounts that can only be used for certain things that those impact fees are related or intended to ameliorate. So they don't go into the general fund where it gets pulled with all the other revenue that the city receives. It goes into specific accounts used for specific types of projects.
Thanks.
The law mandates that.
Great, thanks. One of my comments on this is when you're looking at the facility, it's hypothetical. There's 16 dock doors. It doesn't mean that they're all going to be filled, and there's probably likelihood of not being filled with a semi-trailer every day. It's going to probably be a variety of vehicle sizes. I come from a supply chain background. I've worked these types of facilities. I've run them on a larger network, and I can tell you that the, that generation and that flow is not necessarily going to be all day, every day by any means. It's just the ebb and flow of how business works like that. So I don't think we're going to see, I would not expect us to see 16 bays filled with 16 trucks leaving several times a day, just when you look at how these types of businesses are typically run, specifically with the two types of businesses that are already in that park. It's going to be an extension of what's there, primarily, I would anticipate for the storage and/or manufacturing space that they would offer. So it's, yes, it seems like a lot of door dock, dock doors and a lot of vehicle traffic, but I think that's, there's going to be an ebb and flow to that. It's not going to be an all-day, every-day. So everybody's perspective on this is not, it's not a wicket or spigot that gets turned on and traffic flows consistently. So, thanks.
Thank you. That actually helps me understand the ebb and flow. I had a question about, or my thought about the traffic, and I think Commissioner Bauma clarified or helped clarify that. I think this project fits with what's expected up in that area, so it looks like a good project, well-designed architecturally, seems to kind of check off all the boxes, if you will. So I'd be supportive of this, but I'll leave it to my commissioners. Any other questions? Commissioner Bauma, before we...
I was just going to make a comment to Mr. Knott's concern about the water. On this project, there's a very large biofiltration basin, and with those best management practices, it's pretty much something that they'll have to manage to make sure that the water that leaves their facility is filtered through before it goes into the creek. So that's kind of one of the main things that happens nowadays. You can't, your water can never leave your site without the proper treatment of it, and that's what they have here on their, on their facility, and all that water that comes from their project will go through that. So I think it's going to be a, been a good thing for the creek. It won't, hopefully not do anything bad to the creek. So with that, I also think the project is well-designed, where Malcolm's a great architect. I appreciate them being part of your team. So I'd like to make a motion to propose that we confirm issuance of a Class 32 Catacor exemption per California Environmental Quality SEQA, Article 19, Section 15332, and also adopt Planning Commission Resolution P 2023 P 19, approved development plan conditional use permit for the construction of a 69,000-square-foot shell industrial building at Ordway.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Bauma to approve the project as proposed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dodds. Any other discussion? Don't see any, so go ahead and vote.
I'll let the record show that the vote, or the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good luck on your project. All right. That concludes this evening's public hearing items. On our agenda, I don't see anything listed under appeal of city planners' determination, and we do not have anything agendized under discussion items, so we will go to commissioner I don't have anything to report, but I maybe have a question for the city planner. I missed last, our last meeting on the 26th, and I know there was a good discussion and interaction on the Brother Benno's issue. I'm not going to ask you to kind of walk through every bit of information, but I guess I'm more curious, what's our next step in that process? If you could, you know, kind of take us down that road?
Certainly. Basically... Basically, the big takeaway from, from the last update on Brother Benno's, Chair Rosales, was that we got direction from the Planning Commission to work with all interested parties, all parties involved. So member, representatives from the industrial park, representatives from Brother Benno's, representatives from OPD, representatives from city management staff, to meet and try to find some workable solutions to address some of the issues that have been brought up. We actually held our first meeting a week and a half ago, and we have some, we all agreed to work on certain items. We're going to meet again in early August. The idea is, and I was going to report this later, is that we're going to come back to the commission in 60 days, was the direction, to come up with some further recommendations for the planning commission to consider on how to perhaps amend the Brother Benno's CUP, or not, to address these, these situations, this situation out there in the industrial park. I don't think anyone refutes that there's an issue out there. How much of it's related to Brother Benno's is, is what's in question, and how we're going to find a workable solution. I think one of the takeaways from that meeting, and Planning Commission correct me if I mistake anything, is I don't know that there's a vested interest to revoke the CUP at this time at all. In light of the valuable services that Brother Benno's provides the Oceanside community, what we're charged with doing is finding some workable solutions. So that's what we're working towards.
And did I hear you right? You said there's the smaller group that's kind of working on ideas. Does it have representation from this body, or is it...
At this point, it doesn't. One thing that it may lead to is perhaps more frequent meetings. We haven't had a standing, a Brother Benno Standing Committee meeting in some time now, since the CUP was last amended in 2021. So perhaps a more regular updates to the Standing Committee, which can give updates to the Planning Commission, the full body of the Planning Commission at regular meetings. I think right now, working, the idea is with this working group of individuals, from all, you know, representing all parties, that we provide recommendations to the Planning Commission on how best to address the issues out in the industrial park.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Commissioner Morrissey, do you have a question on...
Can we, as the Planning Commission, see the fruit of that first meeting, of what was discussed? Is that...
It might be a little early for that, because we don't have anything to report back. We're still working on items, Vice Chair Morrissey. But certainly, in the 60 days that the Planning Commission asks us to return, we'll have a full report and update on what's occurred, what's been agreed to, and what we're working on to move forward.
So that was, what, approximately 30 days ago that we had meeting? You've had one meeting in 30 days? And when's your next meeting?
In a couple weeks.
So you're, you're going to have two meetings to address a whole bunch of issues, and you're going to come, and then we're going to have something to look at and...
So on September 11th, we're scheduled to come back to this body with some further reporting and recommendations.
Big task.
We look forward to seeing that, so. And I agree that at the right time, reconvening the ad hoc committee of this group, of this body here would make sense, so. Look forward to that. Okay, moving on. Vice Chair Morrissey, any updates?
No reports.
Okay. Commissioner Obama?
Also no report.
Commissioner Anthony is absent this evening. Commissioner Dodds?
Nothing to report.
And Commissioner Malik?
I'll be absent at the next meeting, if it's held in two weeks. I will not be here. Nothing else to report.
Thank you. City Planner?
Well, thank you, Chairman Rosales. It looks like August, we're going to have a break from meetings. Currently, we don't have anything scheduled for the meeting on August 14th, and today really was the deadline to get our noticing out for any public hearing-type items. Unless a urgent discussion item comes up, I suspect that that meeting will be canceled. And same goes for the meeting on 8/28. There's currently no item scheduled for that date. There's no projects moving forward to the Planning Commission for review at this time for those two dates. Moving on to September, though, we do have, so it's a good thing we're getting a break in August, because in September, we're going to be busy, at least currently for the September 11th meeting. Again, the Brother Benno's item will come back to this body for further discussion and maybe some action further down the line. And then there's a subdivision known as Avocado Road Subdivision, where I think the Planning Commission's received a number of emails on, that will be coming forward to the Planning Commission for consideration. Moving out to City Council, moving on to City Council, upcoming on August 9th, and we've reported this previously, there's a project known as the Tremont. It's down on the 1900 block of South Tremont Street. That project was appealed, actually, in March, from the March decision that this body made, and it's going to be considered. But that appeal's going to be considered by the City Council at their meeting on August 9th. There's also, this body considered back in March, also, the end of March, a conditional use permit for a smoke shop on Oceanside Boulevard. That actually got denied by the City Council. They just, at their meeting on May 27th, I'm sorry, it was May 17th. But there wasn't enough time to get the item on the agenda before the July recess. So a resolution to deny that project, to officially deny it and adopt it, will be considered on August 9th. Moving on to August, meeting of August 23rd, there's a, there's a couple of projects that won't, haven't come through this body, but they're going to Downtown Advisory Committee on, actually, this Wednesday. One is known as the Sunsets 3.0. It's a mixed-use project right up the street here at the, it goes between, it fronts on Horn Street between Pier V Way and Civic Center Drive. It's 180-unit mixed-use development on about .75 acres, also includes about 2,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. This is the third iteration of this project. The City Council has previously approved two other iterations of this project at less stents, at less units. The City Council will also be considering a density cap for mixed-use projects in the downtown district. Just to give you a brief background, back in 2021, I'm sorry, early 2022, the City Council approved a project known as 712 Seagaze. It was, it was an example of how, when paired with density bonus and the waiving of a number of development standards and unlimited density, you could really over, in some people's opinion, over, develop a site. That site's only 15,000 square feet, so about a third of an acre. And it has, I want to say, I don't know the details off the top of my head, I want to say it's 120 units plus 60, maybe it's 113 units, plus 60 hotel rooms. So it's an eight-story building on a very small site with a three-level parking structure. So we got direction from the City Council to re-instill a density cap. In 2019, the City Council removed the density cap for mixed-use projects in the downtown district, knowing that there's a maximum cap of 5,500 units that was envisioned with the redevelopment plan for downtown. And so as long as we're within that 5,500-unit cap, the council thought, through the design guidelines that are incorporated into Article 12 of the zoning ordinance, that design standards would dictate the level of development you could do. No one ever considered the unintended consequences of pairing that with density bonus and waiving a number of development standards. So we're taking a recommendation forward, actually, this Wednesday, to Downtown Advisory Committee for a base density of 100 units per acre. It's twice as much as it, more than twice as much as it used to be, it's not unlimited. And then to incent additional affordable housing, we're modifying our density bonus charts, only applicable to the downtown, to really grant a larger density, which the state law allows us to do. We could grant larger density bonuses. We can't be more restrictive with our density bonuses. So the intent is to grant larger density bonuses at the desired thresholds of 15% for very low-income households and 20% for low-income households. So that item's going to Downtown Advisory Committee on Wednesday, and then to City Council in late August, August 23rd meeting. And finally, on that meeting of August 23rd, there'll be a regular coastal permit for a small deck expansion at 512 The Strand. It's one of those project sites that's located in the appeal jurisdiction, and any modification to those structures, which represents an expansion, requires the processing of a full regular coastal permit. And then finally, at the City Council meeting on September 13th, we're moving out a little bit, but there's a new single-family residence proposed at 615 South Meyer Street. Also requires a regular coastal permit because it's in the appeal jurisdiction of the coastal zone. That concludes the update to the Planning Commission.
I have a question for you, if I may.
Yeah.
The downtown development area, you said, was 5,500 units max total?
Yes, sir.
Where are we in relation to that cap?
The last time we did an inventory of approved projects, we're about 2,300 units, 2,300, so about halfway.
Okay.
And those are new, the new housing units, not, not counting for existing inventory.
What's the unit count for the development that's going across from In-N-Out?
I believe that's 300 units.
300, okay. Yeah, a lot of impact, a lot of stuff downtown.
Yeah, I think overall, we're currently reviewing projects that total approximately 1,200 units currently in the downtown district. So we would add to that 2,300 unit existing count, be about 3,500 if all those projects get approved and ultimately developed.
Yeah. Thank you.
Cool. Okay, we are adjourned conceivably until September 11th, unless something new comes up, so. Thank you.